And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, the 25th of June. It's shortly after the 10:00 a.m. hour and we're calling our meeting to order. And Commissioner Williams, we will start our meeting with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by our good friend Pastor Eugene Nixon from the Senior Pastor of God's Vision Ministry Church here. Pastor Nixon, good to see you this morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Good morning to the Board of Commissioners and to your staff and to the citizens of Rockdale County. I thank you for this opportunity to offer up a word of prayer.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you once again. Before we ask anything, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for allowing us to live another day. Now God, we beseech you on this morning that you would give this Board of Commissioners the wisdom, the knowledge, the application thereof, and that they will do the business of Rockdale County. Lord, we pray now for this county, for this state, this nation, and this world. We ask this in your matchless son's name, Jesus who is the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say thank you to Pastor Nixon again. Also want to say thank you Pastor Nixon for all of the work that you and your ministry does here in Rockdale County. You've been a part of our community for a long time and doing some good work, a lot of it behind the scenes, and we certainly do appreciate it with you and the folks. Y'all give Pastor Nixon a round of applause. Commissioner Williams, I'll take a personal privilege here just for a second and I want to clear the air on a couple of things this morning, very briefly. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. First of all, I want to say thank you to the citizens of Rockdale County. I wanted to make sure I said this publicly again to all of the citizens of Rockdale County. I've had an opportunity to serve as the Post One Commissioner for eight years and as your Chairman for eight years. Thank you. I am leading the way along with the office of the Chairman that we will begin an official transition in October of this year. We will be transitioning in our new Chairman-elect, Chairman Van Ness, and our new Commissioner-elect, Commissioner-elect Smith will be coming into the Board of Commissioners and leading our county. Let me say to every resident, every citizen of Rockdale County, if your heart is in it to win it and to move Rockdale County forward, then you will join me in doing the right thing as we make a smooth transition internally and externally with our community. I'd be remiss if I not say that this, first of all, the campaign and the election is over. The people have spoken and God has spoken and God has a plan. I'm a resident of Rockdale County and I want to continue to see Rockdale County rocking and rolling and winning. And with that being said, I'm going to do everything I can to assist the new administration with coming in and having a smooth transition. I've already met with Chief Operating Officer Sue Sanders this morning and we're going to be charging our staff and leadership team with some things to do that will assist with the new administration coming in and moving forward as we move Rockdale County forward. Now, the official transition will start about mid-October. We've already reached out to Chairman-elect Van Ness and we've already reached out to Commissioner-elect Smith, and they both have agreed, we're having meetings to talk about some preliminary concerns so that we can onboard them again as smoothly as possible. There are no regrets, there's no bitterness, there's nothing to be upset about, we're fine, we're moving forward. And to all of the employees, let me get this out, all of the employees, there's been a lot of uncertainty and a lot of anxiety, but I want to just say to you, breathe, just breathe, exhale, let it out. You're going to be just fine. Rockdale County has a wonderful base of talent here and I'm sure that's going to be respected as you continue to move forward. Do your jobs, do what you're supposed to do, and let's remember to be respectful and in order as we finish up 2024 strong. And I'll be talking to you again in this manner, very similar somewhere toward the end of the year as we wrap this year up. But I wanted to make sure that I said to everybody, there's a lot of people watching online this morning and we have a good number of people here present with us, and I think it's important because leadership is ownership. And I own every bit of it and we're moving forward and we're going to be just fine. So I wanted to take the lead position with saying to our community, this is an opportunity for cohesive togetherness and healing as a community as we move beyond the days and the nights of the campaign and election. That's over now. Let's work together to do what we need to do because if we believe in Rockdale County as I stated a moment ago, then everybody would want to have all hands on deck with doing the right thing to move this, move the county forward. So that wraps up basically what I wanted to say. I'm excited about the days ahead of Rockdale because we've got some bright days in the future of Rockdale County. And to the employees once again, continue to do your job, let's be respectful, and we're going to do everything we can to facilitate the absolute smoothest transition possible in Rockdale County. We have an opportunity before us, let's do it. Let's give a round of applause to the Chair-elect and the Commissioner-elect and the future of Rockdale County. Thank you for that moment. We'll move forward now, Executive Director Relich, and I think we have no special recognition this morning.
That's correct, none this morning.
All right, well, we'll move right into item number four. Commissioner Williams, the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
It has been properly motioned, I second it. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from June 11th of 2024.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six is unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 279 is rezoning case 2024-03, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1079 Southwest Johnson Road from C2 General Commercial to R M Residential Multifamily to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
So I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 280 is rezoning case 2024-08, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1955 Flat Shoals Road from R1 Single-Family Residential District to C1 Local Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to defer this ordinance until the next voting session.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I think this is, this is one that needs some real thought and I think the three of us need to really, you know, communicate through our staff about what it is we want that corner to look like. And so I think we just need to defer it for today.
Commissioner, I agree. I think we'll have an opportunity over the next couple of weeks to meet with the leadership of our planning and development staff and get some little bit more insight and direction. As you stated, I think it's important for us to meet with the executive level team to talk about what it is we really, and what the people of Rockdale County really want to see that particular corner look like. So we've got time to do that and I've already seconded the motion for the deferral. It has been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next item, please.
All right. Item 285 is with the Hospital Authority of Rockdale County. This is for the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division for the Liquid Supplement Grant, the amount is $7,000 with a $450 in-kind match. The term is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And Mr. Chairman and Madam Commissioner, just a reminder, this morning we do not have consent agenda, so we'll be going item by item. We are now under the regular agenda.
That's fine, thank you.
So I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 286 is with the Department of Behavioral Health Development and Disabilities through the Superior Court. This is for the Opioid Response Initiative Grant Application. The amount is $77,700 with no match. The term is December 1st, 2024 through November 30th, 2026.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this?
Well, I was just going to say that Brenda Ernest is heading up our county oversight of the opioid funds. She is doing a phenomenal job of being very cautious. Some counties have rushed in and spent money and she doesn't want to do that. She knows that this is an 18-year process that's going to outlive most of us and she wants to make sure that it's really going to make a difference in the people's lives who are addicted, their families of those who are addicted, so that it really makes a difference in Rockdale. And I appreciate the work that she is doing on that.
Well, I think it's a plus that she's leading it up. We just heard from her a couple of weeks ago and her passion is clear. And when it comes to accountability, it doesn't get any better than Brenda Ernest. So I think Rockdale County has a gem in the fact that she's leading this effort and the fact that she's not rushing. She's being very methodical through this whole process is going to benefit the county as a whole as we take care of some people. Let me just say this real quickly too. This was a good move on behalf of this board to even engage in this process. I remember when it first landed and through the counsel of our county attorney, we took advantage of making sure that the folks in Rockdale who are impacted by opioids, that we had a way to address it, deal with it, combat it, and again, to have Brenda Ernest at the helm is a plus.
Well, and this particular money, if I'm not mistaken, is separate in addition to what we received from the county.
It is.
This is money that went to the state that DBHDD is overseeing and it's through a grant application process. So this is in addition to what we already knew we were going to get.
That's correct. All right. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 287 is with Enterprise Fleet Management through the General Services Fleet Division Department. This is for the Fleet Replacement Plan Change Order Number 16 to Contract 2022-164. This is for one vehicle for water resources in the amount of $10,894.92 per year, and this is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 288 is with Centa's Corporation through the Transportation General Services Fleet Water Resources Planning and Development Departments for Uniform Rental Services for four departments. This is a unit price contract. It's charged each department at 36 months beginning on July 1st, 2024.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 289 is with BM&amp;K PC through the Transportation Department for the Sigmund Road Phase Two Widening Project. This is Contract Change Order Number Two to Contract 2023-43 for an additional two and a half months extension of the CEI services for construction and closeout. This is an additional $47,990 and it's through June 10th, 2025. This is SPOLOST-funded.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one question. So I was driving down Sigmund Road yesterday and there's just one piece left that's a two-lane road. So I guess that's phase three and I'm wondering what the timeline is on that.
Very capable. Director Kelly is the Director of Transportation. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner Williams. So to your point, yes, there is a transition piece and that would be technically considered part of phase three and that's, we're finalizing the design now. Design has already started and it's, you're at about 65%. Those transitions are going to get us to that 100% so we can start construction. So you have...
What transitions are we talking?
So the transitions from phase two to phase three.
Oh, okay.
And that's exactly where you're, where you're looking at. That's the blend between phase two and phase three.
Okay. So will that design include the 10-foot wide sidewalks and the nice lighting that we have just done?
We intend to carry that same design through phase three and phase four.
So the answer is yes.
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 Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that question, Commissioner. We've had a lot of positive feedback about the project on Sigmund Road and those sidewalks are a plus and people are really excited about those sidewalks and it'd be kind of crazy to see them stop right there in the middle of the road instead of going all the way to the end. So that's a good thing. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 290 is with BM&amp;K PC through the Transportation Department. This is for the unpaved roads analysis. This is Change Order Number Three to Contract 2023-43. It's an additional one-month extension of CEI services for closeout. It's an additional $11,280 to add one month.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. What I didn't say, Executive Director Relich, about item number 289, Commissioner Williams, is that it's SPOLOST-funded. And even the transitional piece, I think that's something to continue to celebrate, our SPOLOST committee and the fine work that they've done in the area of transportation here in Rockdale County. So I wanted to just very briefly point that out. As we're nearing the completion of this project, here is still funding through the efforts of SPOLOST. And I've said it repeatedly, Rockdale County cannot survive without SPOLOST funding. So this is some very positive work here. Next item, please.
Item 291 is with Motorola Solutions to the Emergency Management Agency and 911. This is for the Arc Pro GIS migration from Farmer Road server to the Eastview server. The amount is $9,827.51. This is a one-time charge for 90 to 120 days. It's for the, and funded through the Emergency 911 Tower Fund.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second the motion. It's been properly, been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. Item 292 is with Motorola Solutions through the Emergency Management Agency, EMA 911, for the interface between vendors for Motorola and Pro QA to allow the CAD server to talk to the Pro QA dispatching software. The amount is $15,228.14. This is for a five-year cost and it's funded through the Emergency 911 Tower Fund.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
No, but I can just see, you know, like some of the movies, cars and stuff where inanimate things are become human, they're talking to each other.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just, I just had this picture in my head.
Commissioner Williams, it's always a blessing to be able to have an imagination and then it's another blessing to be able to use it. But I want to be a little bit more intentional and technical. Come on up, Deputy Director, she gonna bring it to real life for you and tell you why this is important out at our E911. Educate us as well, Deputy Director.
I wish it were that fun. That'd be great. So this is just, our Pro QA dispatching software is something that is part of our quality control process for 911 dispatchers. It takes them through a question tree essentially. So this is the process that allows our CAD server, which is what talks from the 911 room to those units out in the field, to talk to the Pro QA dispatching system. So it's an interface patch.
Okay.
And it's very important too. I don't know whether you really got all of that, Commissioner, or not.
Well, I figured it was super important.
It is super important. It's super important for those folks in the field too because when they're talking, the interface between the dispatcher and the operator.
Right.
That message has to move quickly and efficiently and all the technical aspects of it has to really work. Let me just say this in this space. Rockdale County, we've had an opportunity to learn from so many other communities and counties and cities across the metro because if you've been paying attention to the news over the last 36 months, there's been a lot of problems in the area of E911 and 911 centers and not just with personnel, but even with technology and equipment. This affords Rockdale County to be on the cutting edge of advanced technology and making sure that we're ready for the future as we move forward, particularly in this new center that we're transitioning in. This is really going to put us ahead of it. And it keeps the safety of both the citizens and our public safety personnel at the top of the radar in terms of making sure we take care of our own people. So that's, which is what 911 is all about. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. All right, did I close that one out?
Not yet.
Okay.
Need to vote.
We, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 293 is with CompuNet Incorporated through Technology Services Department. This is for the Microsoft Fast Track Benefit Microsoft Intune. This is in conjunction with Dell Marketing Contract 2020-72. This is at no cost and for signature only.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second the motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 294 is with Comcast Enterprise Service through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Tax Commissioner, ENS Circuit Fiber Service. The amount is $430.92 per month with a total of $25,855.20 per year. This is for 60 months and is submitted for ratification.
I move to approve, to ratify this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 295 is with Georgia Time Recorder Company through the Clerk of Courts Office. This is for the annual preventative maintenance for the date and timestamp clocks. The amount is $1,800. The term is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 296 is with the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service. This is the annual contract agreement for personnel, excuse me. This is Change Order Number Two to Contract 2022-109. The amount is $111,455. The previous amount was $106,852. And the term is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 297 is with the Grove Park Farm LLC through Andrew C. Schiff Sr. This is for Allied Capital LLC through Wendell McNeil. This is for the Water Resources Sewer Construction Agreement related to the proposed Highway 138, requesting the proposed eight-inch sewer line be substituted with a 10-inch sewer line to provide additional capacity for future uses. The amount is $250,000 and is reimbursement.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I think this is an interesting idea because the developer actually approached the county about looking towards the future and saying that they would fund the difference.
Well, and you know, I think the developers are paying attention to Rockdale County now.
Right.
And to that developer's credit, to take ownership of the future development of what his vision is, but also it lines up the vision and the future plans of the county. As you know, Commissioner, the north side of the county, where we just cut the ribbon on Station Number 10, is growing and in order to meet the infrastructure needs, somebody's got to foot the bill. Well, when a developer steps up and say, hey, we're going to foot the bill, oh, that's just music to the county. So, and I think it's just music all around in terms of good music with the fact that the northern part of the county is growing, but when the developer is taking ownership with footing the bill to help with the infrastructure, that says a lot about the direction we're going in. And again, I tell you, we're on the radar all over the metro in the region, so people are paying attention to how we're moving and a lot of the conversations we've been having over the few, over the past few years about what's needed to move the county forward and how they have to play and participate in terms of making those investments. Yes. Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded.
That's correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 298 is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through the Water Resources Department. This is a standard utility agreement contract item... This is a standard utility agreement contract item agreement for the Salem Road Widening Sewer Relocations. And the estimated amount is seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two ninety-nine is with Vortex Services through the Water Resources Department for manhole raising and lids replacement for by-board cooperative pricing. The amount is one hundred forty thousand. The bond is at one point five percent to be added, two thousand one hundred dollars, and to be completed by February of twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three hundred is with Vortex Services through the Water Resources Department for Conyers Middle School, Forest Main and Rockdale Jail, Forest Main, Northside Scott Street Sewer Replacement for the by-board cooperative pricing. The amount is four hundred fifty thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. The bond is at one point five percent to be added in the amount of six thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. And this is for one year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three oh one is with the Department of Human Services of the Division of Family and Children's Services for Juvenile Court Reshape Grant Application. The amount is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents with no match. The term is October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three oh two is with ESO Solutions to the Fire Rescue Department for Emergency Reporting Software. This is for access to historical data in the amount of five hundred dollars per year. This is for one year with option to renew one additional year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three oh three is with Alfred Benish and Company for the Transportation Department to develop the Safe Streets for All Action Plan. This is in the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars within eighty percent grant funds and a forty-eight thousand dollar twenty percent match. This is for twelve months through June twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, what what is the Safe Streets for All plan?
I'm going to let Director Kelly, you that's you start the show, I guess, in a good way.
Good morning again. So this is part of the Biden Administration's grant. They had they had a series of grants that went out. This was one of them. So we applied for this grant. Safe Streets for All looks at the designs that would better implement or help pedestrian traffic, pedestrian flow of traffic throughout the county. And so we applied for this grant. We were selected and here we are.
So is this just a study then?
So this actually writes a proposal on different implementation strategies that we will proceed and go for a secondary grant for funds for construction. So this gets us there.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right. It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Okay, item three oh four is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance for the replacement of HVAC units at Restorative Justice Complex Building. The amount is one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and this is ARPA-funded.
So I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I figured you would. It's been I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We've got to have air conditioning out at the Restorative Justice Complex. Can't be hot up in there. Absolutely. You think about where we are right now in in the heat of June, Lord have mercy, if we opened up that place and we didn't have AC out there, we'd have a I don't we'd have to have somebody to come restore everybody else. I knew you would support that one. Next item, please.
All right, item three oh five is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance. This is a proposal to furnish and install new HVAC systems for the new Tax Commissioner's Office located at for the new office location. The amount is twenty-one thousand four hundred thirteen dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Same applies.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item three oh six is a requisition for the water distribution for Core and Main. This is for soft copper tubing. The amount is fourteen seventeen thousand five hundred eighty dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three oh seven is a requisition for Technology Services for DICEs Solutions. This is for the Wireless Networking and Infrastructure Products for Fire Station Ten. The amount is thirty-one thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-two cents and this is SPOSS-funded.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions?
So is Fire Station Ten up and running at this point?
Come on up, Chief. Yeah, how about a tact team? Chief McDaniel and Director Hammer both worked on this project.
So when we were there last week, they're doing minor changes and we're hoping to be able to do a walkthrough within the next week or so, correct?
That's correct. They were doing the final finishes on the inside, doing the punch list, the touch-up and having the furniture. If you were out there, if you remember, we had the lockers.
Right.
Those are all owner items that need to be installed and this is also the technology. So we hope probably within the next two or three weeks to have it ready for them to occupy.
Thank you.
That's 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 great news there, Chief. And you you have the personnel ready to move and and rock and roll.
Before we even broke ground last year, we had already started hiring and training and getting acclimated to Rockdale County.
Okay.
So once the station opened, they're ready to transition in and handle the territory.
All right. Outstanding.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Director Hammer. Do we close that one out?
No.
All right.
You had a motion and a second.
All right, it's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, item three oh eight is a requisition for the Water Resources Department through ACOM for the Jack Turner Dam. This is additional engineering services. The amount is one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Item three oh nine is rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero two. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning nineteen hundred southeast Dogwood Drive from R M Residential Multifamily to M One Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three ten is rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash ten. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning sixteen eighty, seventeen hundred and seventeen twenty Walker Road Southwest from A R Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer this to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item three eleven is with Monday dot com through Technology Services Department to provide licenses for enterprise plan. This is change order number three to contract twenty twenty-three dash ninety-two. It's a renewal for seventy users. The amount is thirty-six thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and it's for one year.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so Executive Director Rutledge.
We are down to public comment. I have received no red cards. Does anyone? We have one person who would like to speak. Anyone else? I'll go ahead and read while they're turning this in.
Yes, ma'am.
As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and or members of the audience shall be permitted.
All right, thank you, Executive Director Rutledge. First up, we have Mr. George Kelicak. Come on up, Mr. Kelicak.
Morning Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioner, Directors, Deputy Directors, citizens of Rockdale County. I was encouraged by many citizens from last week's Board of Commissioners meeting to address the following for clarification. I was insulted as a citizen and an elected official of Rockdale County citizens regarding your comment that you don't care about the law, you just care about citizens. So for clarification today, I contacted the ACCG, your Association of County Commissioners. And in the twenty twenty-two documentation, which I'll give copies of to our commissioners and to your county attorney, it does state on page twenty-eight of thirty-nine, "There shall not use their cell phones or electronic devices for emailing, chatting, posting on social media during a meeting." We are appreciated as citizens when we speak in front of this Board of Commissioners for the due respect that we give you and vice versa. Also, I would like to state that in other counties, ordinances demonstrate commissioners are free to develop and adopt their own ethics and code of conduct ordinances to govern themselves beyond any written law into state law. In one county, there has been a commissioner who violates similar provisions of the county Code of Conduct Ordinance may be fined by other members of the Board of Commissioners up to five hundred dollars. So I stand before you this morning, representing citizens of Rockdale County, to abide by these ACC laws. This chapter contains general information for the use of members of the ACCG and the public. This information is not and should not be considered legal advice. Readers should consult with legal counsel before taking action based on this information contained in this chapter. So again, I'm just providing this information for you all for clarification and the citizens of Rockdale County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelicak, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. So Executive Director Rutledge, are there any other comment cards?
I don't have anymore.
Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to board comments. And guess what, Commissioner Williams? I'm starting with you.
Okay, so you talked about the growth on the north side of the county. And yesterday was the ribbon cutting for the Whataburger. My family was super excited. My husband grew up in Florida with a Whataburger. My daughter lived in Texas for a while with a Whataburger. So of course, we had Whataburger for dinner last night. They I was impressed, though, that they opened up on Friday a an opportunity for county employees, city employees to come and pick up a free meal. Oh, there we are with a Whata guy. Yes. And I as I would talk to the general, the regional manager, he said nine hundred people showed up.
Wow.
And I know it took me quite a while to get through the drive-through lane last night. But that's just another option. You know, there has been no options on the north side for most of the time I've lived on the north side. So now this gives us another opportunity for someplace to eat in addition to the three or four that have developed and been opened over the last three or four years.
That's right.
So that was that was kind of fun. There were a lot of people there. The chamber, of course, did a really nice job of promoting it. So this today is the last board meeting during June, which is Alzheimer's Awareness and Brain Awareness Month. And so we've got it, we've got this picture. We've got a picture of Deidre and I in our Alzheimer Awareness T-shirts. And then there's there's a brief little video about it that I think Public Relations will show.
Good and purple.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. I wore my purple one more time. So there's a anyway, there's a brief little video. Maybe.
Alzheimer's disease is a progressive brain disorder characterized by changes in the brain that lead to deposits of certain proteins. This causes the brain to shrink and brain cells to eventually die. Memory loss is the key symptom of Alzheimer's disease. Difficulty remembering recent events or conversations are early signs. As the disease progresses, patients become more likely to get lost in familiar surroundings and eventually begin to forget the names of everyday objects and family members. Additional symptoms include difficulty thinking and reasoning, making judgments and decisions, planning and performing familiar tasks, and changes in personality and behaviors. Risk factors for Alzheimer's disease include age, family history, headaches, Down Syndrome, and cardiovascular disease. There's no cure for Alzheimer's, but there are treatments that may change the disease's progression and symptoms, improving quality of life for patients and their caregivers. If you or a loved one are experiencing symptoms, consult your doctor.
So you know, once again, Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia affect they they everybody. Every, you know, race, every socioeconomic status. And in the last couple of weeks, we have lost our former Representative Pam Stevenson, who worked so hard and did so much to this disease. And so, you know, it's something we talked about these last week, tips to boost your health as you age. But I also wanted to share just a minute about what are we doing in Rockdale County? So our Senior Services Department and the Alzheimer Respirity Care Resource, which is online, if you go to the senior service and you can click on the link that says Alzheimer Respirity Care. It the Respirity Home Care Specialist provides support and relief for the primary caregiver of those clients with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. of those clients with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. Services include light housekeeping, meal preparation, supervision, and companionship. We actually have a Community Resource Specialist at Empower Line, which is a resource that, that the county has partnered with. And that number is four oh four, four six three, three 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 three. So, you know, there's, there's things going on. We are working to introduce a few more services. In fact, we have a meeting this week with Deputy Director Susan Morgan to see what else we can be doing in Rockdale County for those age, aging. She gave a great presentation a couple of weeks ago on senior services. And, you know, we want to be able to expand what's happening. So those are my comments today.
Okay, very good. And I'm glad you mentioned, you referenced the county website. I want to take the liberty just to remind everybody that's listening and watching this broadcast, Rockdale County is a business and we do have a website. You can always go to, visit our website and find out about so many different things that are taking place in and around the county. A lot of times folks say, "I didn't know that, I don't know that, I don't know how to get it." Well, start with the website and just navigate your way through the site and it will take you to a lot of places and it will help you learn about what's happening in and around Rockdale County. I do want to call up Director Redman because we have some more. We're in the heart of the summer, people. We've got a lot of things rocking and rolling out at Parks and Recreation or all across the county as relate to parks and recreation. One of those things includes the upcoming Summer Concert Series. But not limited to those things. Director Redman, you want to give, give us a brief overview of what's happening? Y'all are like business of B right now.
Yes, sir. Good morning Chairman, good morning, Madam Commissioner. Yes Chairman, you are correct. The Summer Concert Series kicks, series kicks off this weekend. We'll have a performance by the Erica Dawson exclusive. This performance will be held at Costly Mill Park. To enter Costly Mill Park this year, we're going to try something different and open both entrances for parking to alleviate traffic congestion. So you can enter off twenty-five ninety-nine Salem Church Road, or you can enter off of twenty-four fifty-five Costly Mill Road. The show starts, the concert is from five PM to seven PM. Bring your lawn chairs and your spirit to have a good time. So looking forward to getting that started this year.
Alright.
Also wanted to make an announcement that our pickleball courts are finally open. I have received like thousands of texts about when are they opening, when are they opening? So it took us a while to finalize some things. We had some punch list items that we had to take care of for safety reasons. One was a ramp, ADA ramp to enter the court. Another one was an issue that we had with the fence. So we didn't want to open it with those things lingering. We wanted to make sure it was safe for everybody to enter the courts and be able to use them. So yesterday when, as I was going into work early because it's so hot outside, the courts were full of people at like nine AM yesterday. So I'm finally glad we finally got that up and running. Also, we have a, just wanted to highlight the tennis camp, summer tennis camp that we have. It's been a, the tennis program is, is growing rapidly, especially for youth. Junior tennis is a big deal nationwide, not just in Rockdale County. It's a nationwide big deal to get the kids out at an early age, to get them acclimated to the game of tennis so that they can further their opportunities as far as college scholarships are related. Some of them turn professional at a very early age. So Michael Raglan, who is the manager over at the Tennis Center, has done an excellent job to get, implement and get some new and up and coming programs and they've been very successful. So just wanted to highlight that.
Very good. You got, let me just go back to the pickleball. I mean, that is, of course, that's a sport and activity that has moved rapidly across the whole country. And that includes the metro region and certainly here in Rockdale County. It seems as if we couldn't move fast enough with the number of inquiries and calls from folks asking about what we were going to do or what our plans are. And I'm glad to hear this morning that when you went out there, the courts were loaded with people. People are taking advantage of getting out early in the morning during the summer heat because that's just smart, the smart thing to do. But Rockdale has, historically has had a, a history of having a, a robust tennis community. And it continues in that direction, making sure that we have the right amenities and facilities to be able to address the tennis population in, in Rockdale County. Both of these afford not only our young people, but people in general an opportunity to get outside and exercise. And it's the type of recreation that people enjoy. They like it. So I know that pickleball, it was a big hit before we can get it completed.
It was.
It's going to be a bigger, even bigger hit as the courts are already taking advantage. Then I also want to go back a moment while you're standing there Director. You talked about the upcoming Summer Concert Series. Let me, let me say this and hats off to Fire and Rescue because it is hot. And the thing that Chief McDaniel and her team has already done from a proactive standpoint, we don't take anything for granted in this heat. So the EMT and EMS folks are already there on site. If there's an incident or accident, we don't have to wait for the vehicle to arrive. We're already there. And I think I remember last year you had some type of mist cooling.
Misting tent.
Yeah, you had a misting tent. If somebody just was a little too hot and they get a little mist of cool water, that, that helped out a lot. I also know each year we bring out, this event brings a lot of seniors out, not just regular community and adults. It brings a lot of seniors out. And I want to say this, come early. I'm so excited to hear what you're doing with the logistics of the parking, the transportation and the mobility aspect of it. Get there early. Also want to, one of our employees who works hard for us out at Costly Mill, he, he asked me, could I mention this? And I'm going to mention it. The county government has multiple different levels of liabilities. There's things that we just shouldn't do and things, even, even sometimes it may look morally right. The liability involved in them could really spire us in a whole different direction. And I'm speaking specifically about the golf carts that are out at Costly Mill. They are for employee use only. They are not for the citizen. They're not for the public. And so I'm encouraging particularly our seniors to arrive early. Here's what happens. The moment we put a citizen, a senior citizen, and try to do a good deed and give them a ride on that golf cart, and somebody slips, fall, feet get stuck or whatever, just in, just trying to do the right thing Pastor Nixon, next week, we're going to be hit with a lawsuit because we were not supposed, we're not insured to cover those citizens. So as you make your way to the Summer Concert Series, go have fun, get there early. Don't get mad at the attendance. There's, it's not their job to put you on the golf cart. In fact, they can't put you on the golf cart because of liability purpose. Get there early, take your time and make your way down to the event field where the concert is being held. And some nice person will probably walk alongside you and make sure that you get there safe. But you cannot get on the golf cart. I thought I'd say that because sometimes when employees are trying to do just their jobs, people get upset with them. And we don't want to put them in a situation to have to try to explain that. So I thought I'd just go ahead and I, I hope that employee, usually they're watching or monitoring the DOC, I hope they're listening. I hope that helps. And if you happen to be entering the park and you're walking alongside a senior citizen, or anybody for that matter, that needs a little extra help, help them, okay? Thank you Director.
With that Chairman, I'm so glad you said that. We do have ADA parking available.
Yes.
We will get you as close as to the available.
As close as we can get you, right.
Yes, sir, without driving down into the traffic where pedestrians are walking.
Absolutely.
So we do have ADA parking. And just wanted to mention also along with the pickleball, last year we started a partnership with Mercy Heart to do a pickleball tournament. So we're going to bring that back this year. It will be September fourteenth. It will be held at Rockdale Tennis Center, thirteen seventy Parker Road. It will start at eight AM. We use the tennis center because of the number of participants. One tennis court equals two pickleball courts. So with us having twelve courts at the tennis center, that's twenty-four courts available for play for a pickleball tournament. So there'll be more to come on that as we move closer to September.
Oh, and you, thank you for that Director. One last, you just provoked thought to remind me, one last thing. This came up last year as well. Yes, you can bring your dog, but your dog has to be on a leash. And you've got to control your dog. Everybody don't like dogs. Some people are scared to death of dogs. So if you bring your dog, put it on a leash and take full control of your dog. Don't just let your dog be wandering all over the park and we trying to figure out who and what dog, who belongs to the dog or all of that stuff. Just, just put your dog on the leash. It's okay to bring it out, but have full control. I thought I'd better say that because we, we have folks that bring their dogs and most of them are buying by the rules. But every now and then, that music get to the dog and the dog gets loose and turns into a hot dog. So, so, so keep up with your dog and make sure it's on the leash out at the park. Again, everybody, don't take well the dogs, absolutely.
Thank you Chairman.
Director, anything else we need to know that's happening summer wise with parks and recreation? That pretty much covers it.
That's it right now.
Alright.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Alright, Deputy Director Barnum, you, you know, we're in the heart of this heat. And that's a space that EMA operates in. What say you about this heat advisory that we're in out here?
So we're currently in a heat dome, which means that it's a weather system that basically creates a dome over the Atlanta area that makes it more, more hot than it normally is. We are trending in some historical highs. We've had a couple of days that have been higher than they have ever been in the past. But that's not to say that this summer will be hotter than it's ever been. We're hoping that we'll have some systems come in and cool it down. But we do open cooling centers when we deem it necessary, which is on the weekends when it is over a hundred for more than two hours, we'll open a cooling center.
That's very good. And in the event that we have to open up a cooling center, how do we communicate that to the general public?
We will advertise it on our billboard. We'll advertise it on our social media. PR will typically put out a press release as well and then they'll put it on channel twenty-three.
And when you say billboard, tell me about that.
The electronic billboard that we have off of I-20 right before exit eighty-two.
Okay.
That one.
Alright, alright, very good, alright.
So I noticed, I, I was just looking at the weather. It's in the high nineties for the next two weeks.
Yes. Yes, we're hoping that a system will come in and cool it down. But it is that time of year where it is just, it's a hot one.
It is what it is. Alright, well, it's good news to know that we do have the cooling centers and that if need be, we will activate those. And we will communicate that so people will know where they are so that we can take care of anybody that's in need of a cooling system.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you so much Deputy Director. I think I am, Executive Director Holmes. Yes, you, you come on up and Executive Director Holmes is our Executive Director of Talent Management, the People Department. Absolutely.
Good morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioner. Just wanted to make an announcement, a very important announcement this morning, that effective immediately, we will be implementing vacancy control. For those of you that are not familiar with vacancy control, that allows us to fill essential county positions only while still servicing the citizens of Rockdale County. So in particular, we will definitely be hiring for public safety. Anything other than that will be under our vacancy control program. In addition to implementing vacancy control effective immediately, I also wanted to announce that we will be canceling our annual employment summit that was scheduled for this Thursday at the Rockdale Career Academy from ten AM to two PM. Want to thank everybody for supporting our annual summit. But at this time Chairman, we will be canceling the annual employment summit and implementing vacancy control. So thank you.
Thank you Executive Director for making that announcement. I think it lines up with where we are with this transition. And it also affords our new board that's coming in an opportunity to collaborate among themselves as to what the future looks like in terms of our hiring program and any type of vacancies they deem necessary that needs to be filled. I, I think it's a good move. I think it's, and, and she's already stated that if we have some public safety issues that we have to address, dealing with public safety, of course, we will address those. But everything else I think is the best decision and I appreciate the board for supporting that decision as well.
Yes, thank you Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Executive Director Holmes. Okay, want to make sure I am not overlooking Executive Director Rutledge, anything from your perspective out of the Clerk's Office and Legislative Affairs?
Well, let's just talk about meeting dates and times. So Thursday night, the twenty-seventh, this week, we'll have a zoning public hearing. And then in July, we have the Fourth of July holiday and the additional holiday that was declared. And the board will be on recess. And so the next time the board will have an actual board voting meeting will be on July the twenty-third. So just wanted to make that announcement.
Alright, Chief Sanders.
Good morning. Just one announcement just for the general public. Our, due to the Third of July celebration, our offices in Old Town, not the courthouse excluded, but the administration building as well as Rockdale Water Customer Service will close at four PM on July third to allow, the streets will close down at five. So our, get our employees out and, but we'll be putting that on social media and announcing that so people are well aware.
Thank you for that Chief. And I have to say this is, I think maybe the third, how many years the county has been partnering with the city on this project? It's been a good number of years now. We've been doing it for a while. This is one of the joint projects between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County combined. We call ours the Third of July Celebration. And the City of Conyers is responsible for the actual event. We contribute to the event. They're going to block off the streets. I, I'm hoping that several, several of our employees will be able to hang around and partake in the festivities and participate in, in terms of what's going on. And it's always a spectacular event if the weather is permitting. Deputy Director Barnum talked about those systems, better known as rain. But hopefully we'll have a good evening where we can get the fireworks off. And it's a family event as well. It's a family event. And as, whereas we're shutting down, as the chief made mention, at four PM, our employees won't be negatively infected by the four o'clock shutdown. And I think from an economic development standpoint, it might boost to the whole activity of what's going to happen that evening by them hanging around and staying and being a part of the festivities as I mentioned a moment ago. So we're looking forward to the Third of July and we're looking forward to partnering with the city again with this wonderful family event. And that way you'll, you'll have the Fourth of July to do just what you want to do, even if that's just in your own backyard. So we got some options here. Is there anything, I think we're doing good. I, I'll, let me. Your Siri, Siri had something to say. Commissioner Williams, okay? Alright, that's just like technology, isn't it? You better mind that telephone, that cellphone while you're up here. Alright, I do want to, now, we have several new faces in our audience this morning. But I do want to acknowledge the presence of my, one of my long-term mentees and friends. He's no stranger to Rockdale County. And that is Mr. Ben Sosby. Instead of Ben, so everybody can, y'all give Ben a round of applause. Ben, I'm, I'm taking a few privileges along the way as we make our way to December. Would you like to say anything this morning? Is there anything you'd like to say? It's up to you if you want to come up to the podium. You're good, alright, okay. Ben is, Ben a, a watcher of politics and civics his entire life. And he's been very active with several cities and counties throughout the state of Georgia. He has a, Ben is the only person that I know personally that has a super close relationship with President Jimmy Carter. Now, I know, I know, I mean, I see all the folks on TV, Miss Chester, but to know somebody that knows somebody that knows the president, that's Ben Sosby there. He knows President Jimmy Carter personally. And I think President Carter, if had the opportunity, he could say a few words about Ben Sosby. Ben is a fine citizen and we're glad to have you here, my friend for a long time. So glad to have, y'all give Ben another round of applause, absolutely. Well, Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday. Stay cool. This meeting is adjourned.